Here.
Ready to.
Here.
Lord.
Yes.
I am here.
Ooh, February twenty-two, twenty-two agenda. Twenty-two agenda.
Changes or anything?
I don't have any.
Oh, motion on the agenda. I'll start.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. Close. Here we go. February six, twenty-two minutes. We get a chance to let those say your fractions. The motion on that is. Motion to put on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Same time? Motion here. You got time to discuss the March schedule?
Yeah.
We have to meet for sure on the eighth, the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth. Um, Jack emailed me last week and he can interview a couple of the applicants would be available on Friday, March fourth. One at one and one at three if that goes through the board to interview. And then the other applicant will be, um, like, March fifteenth. We just have to have him by Friday. The fourth.
Sure. We have to be here as he interviews.
No, it's four. It's only on.
It's the fourth and what was the other?
The eighth and the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth for sure. And then the, and then the fifteenth, we could interview that other applicant because he'll be here this week, that week.
So just put the whole month down.
(laughing).
I'll make a motion on the fourth, eighth, fifteen, twenty-two and twenty-nine.
And then you said the fifteenth, did you?
Yep, yep.
So on the fourth and the interviews at one o'clock, so do you want me to meet ahead of time, like, at twelve-thirty? In case there's something to be added or on the agenda to discuss, or do you want me at one and discuss everything later?
It's very much for me.
Whatever you think.
Okay. Me too.
And then on the fifteenth, I'll have to get back as to what time of work I don't object at all.
Okay. A little motion to have a second one up? The low states in March, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Sorry, there's plenty of opportunities to work in more during the discussion.
Because we'll have to have a meeting with, um, Dickinson. So they want to, Dickinson wants to do it during March. I don't know if they, IFT, they only want to do it that way.
So you. I should be back in town, but by, uh, twelve-thirty, but I'm not sure I will on the fourth. We have three judicial in Sioux City. Okay. Do we have time to discuss the, you know, that's more, not, not really. Wait a couple seconds. Mike, you need some more coffee?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Do we, should we take a break?
Yeah, a minute.
Minute or so.
At the Rani. It's a long way.
How long is it? March eighth, we won't be here, will we, Jason?
Yeah, you will. Are you coming?
Once, uh, come to that, yeah. Okay, yeah, be right. Close enough, thirty fifty. Redactor in the county supervisor district, public command. Through resolution twenty-five, four hundred and two.
Just the formality that we, another step that we have to go through to, to supervise this district. And then the same as what LFG.
And that's the same as the map or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
For the others?
They're just kind of act, you know, like Jerry's Jason, or district is Ashton, Melbourne and, um, Ed's here, Main City, you know, too. There's a lot of counties having, you know, turned back from LFG.
Yeah.
And it's really.
They can even have a review. Was it Sioux County that were struggling, they, they rejected?
Yeah, that's true. A lot of nightmares, I'm very thankful that our, when it's been there, it did.
So then we just got close enough.
I, I've not received any comment.
No, no, no.
Already, honestly?
Or comment.
Is that be, close above here?
Motion, motion to close the public here? Or just close this? All right. Public hearing is closed.
Make a motion to a two resolution twenty-five.
Motion. Support. Ms. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Lord?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Vina?
Aye.
And the role, aye. Here. Now, uh, we. Go back and talk. Dan? Is that you?
Andrew.
You met Andrew?
Yeah.
And, oh, I think she's saying, sorry.
So, um, kind of wanted to come to the board again to see, um, about making a proposal to adopt that resolution to make EMS or the essential service.
You better sit down and see it so we can see it.
I can't hear you.
I couldn't, I couldn't even see us.
So anyway, we're coming to the board again to see if maybe they would, um, make a proposal to, for the adoption of the resolution to make, uh, EMS, essential service in our county. So what that would entail and hopefully, um, Rochelle perhaps even more than what I did. Um, we would have to, the board would have to make a proposal or make a resolution to declare it. Then we would also have to have a couple of board meetings to figure out the amount of money that we're going to need to run this service. We can do it two ways. Um, we can do a sur tax, um, and that can be up to twenty percent. Or a property tax that doesn't exceed over seventy-five percent. You can do, you can do one of the other or you can do both. So.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah, seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents for that. I'm sorry, yeah, seventy-five cents. Um, we do, I do know what, uh, how many hours it takes to run the service from last year. We kind of know what my budget is, but what we're looking at is, um, what it's going to take to run this. Obviously, we're, we're looking at hiring, um, time help would benefit, um, a place to put it. I, I think that the voters have a right to have, throw in their opinions. And I think that's when we, we have to have this as an open forum. Is that correct, Rochelle?
Yeah, we have to have a resolution, we have to have it published sixty days in the paper. Before the board can approve it. And then we have to, and then we have to, um, once the board, and when I'm taking it, once the board approves the resolution, then we have to have a committee forum.
Right.
And, and in order to put it on the general election, which we can do, that it has to pass by sixty percent. That majority has to be sixty percent approval for the voters.
Would that be on a twenty-twenty-two dollar?
Yeah, yeah, if we get it all projected in a relative.
So Rochelle, is that sixty percent of the registered voters in the county or sixty percent of the voters?
Sixty percent of the vote board. This is like any bond issue. It has to pass and has to pass by sixty percent.
And what do you think you need dollar wise? Because you can't just start out with the max value of seventy-five cents.
Well, I think at one time when we talked about this, it was, we used the property tax, um, number. And I think you came back with like four or fifty thousand dollars.
I, I did a rough, it was rough. Calculated last night or yesterday, and it was like, if we did the seventy-five cents on our current evaluation, it'd be like four hundred and fifty some dollars.
Right.
What would, what would it take to amass things?
That's a good question. I think we need to get some people together and sit down and figure out what it would take. Because I have, I can tell you the hours it would take, but I have no idea, like, in benefits and insurance and that sort of stuff, so.
Right.
We need to get some sort of committee together to sit down and figure out the exact amounts you need. And how many you need, because you can't just say, we need two full-time people and expect them to cover twenty-four seven for three hundred and sixty-five, you know? You gotta sit down and figure out how many people you need, how you might use the volunteers. If you do get a couple of full-time people, you know, there's a lot that goes into it, you know, a lot of.
Last year, we used about twenty-three thousand, um, twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six million hours. It was with our regular employees.
And would you hire two paramedics or what?
I would, I would definitely. And I would, I would make the, um, EMS position a full-time position. And part of those duties would be responding to both E nine-one-one calls. So, but yeah, and, um.
How much do paramedics need?
Um, they're probably twenty-five, they start out at twenty-five an hour to thirty, twenty-five to thirty, uh, dollars an hour.
What are the pros and cons versus the way it's, uh?
Well, the pros and cons would be the fact that you would, this is, Oseola County is kind of unique because we're right here and we are almost the only ALS unit in, in this area. So it would be covering quite an area as far as Bigelow, we do go to Bigelow, but also that is covered by Bigelow. But Little Rock, all of Oseola County into San Warren, Hartley.
If you started making this the central service and started paying, you'd have to come up with some sort of twenty-eighteen agreement or mutually agreements with these other towns.
Right.
So they pay their share.
Those towns would have to have another twenty-eighteen.
Right now, it's just like, uh, we do respond to Little Rock when they don't have anybody in town, you know? Or Bigelow, we respond to when they don't have anybody in town, so. That's all gotta be, would have to be written up and made official on how you're going to handle that stuff. And I was just talking to Kevin and Jared this weekend in O'Brien County. They're having the same issues. So they want to kind of get together with Sandy and figure out some sort of sharing agreement, you know, or we all work together? Or I don't know how that's all going to work out, so.
Is O'Brien County looking into this too? Um, right now, uh, we have three towns and they're in two counties. And those are towns. That's Orange City, Grandville and Sioux Center. So I was gonna meet up with them and, and visit with them. How, and obviously, city and county are a little different, how they run it. But as far as Jared goes, I have no idea. He hasn't really said whether they were gonna.
That's not being talked about in the beginning of the bottle. I also read a year ago that if we have it on the election and it does not pass, then we have to start from square one again. Because can't, you know, we can't start over, we have to start from square one, any revolution and how I read this thing.
But surrounding counties, is EMS, the central service funded that way in the surrounding counties?
Um, well, surrounding counties like Dickinson, Clay, they, their ambulance has ran out of their hospital, their hospital owns their ambulance.
Well, we're about the only county that does countywide, you know, that's. Like Lion County has Lion County ambulance, but they also have George, which is all separate from Lion County. Not like us where we have Oseola County ambulance and we have units in each town. Lion County has Lion County ambulance, which is in Rock Rapids. But they still have Inwood and George and Little Rock has an ambulance, you know, they all have their own ambulance.
Yeah.
But they don't transport, do they?
Little Rock doesn't.
Yeah, Lion County transports for everybody. They do have, like.
How does, how does that work with our districts? You know, fire districts reach into neighboring counties? And we levy for that and get that money for those, I mean, is, are we just Oseola County or do we follow the district?
No, we just Oseola County.
Okay.
We don't use the fire districts. Per se, we, we do as far as, like, Ocheaton ambulance covers Ocheaton fire district. But that's just how it's set up. But Oseola County ambulance is all just one entity, you know what I'm saying?
And the hospital has no desire to be involved with this program?
No, uh-uh, we really haven't, we really haven't seen much support out of our hospital for many years. You know, financially or, um, no, it's not really. I'm, I'm not for sure, it wasn't, it wasn't something I did, but, but it has, it's been that way for a while.
So we bring in the people, we get the bill out for the people, if they help, but we drop off, they don't participate in?
We, we also need to figure out how, you know, get that revenue worked to, to make this an essential service that revenue is getting. We got a bill, but, uh, we'll build that up. We have a couple of things in, like, Dan said, we, um, Jared wants to work with the rest of our county. We have a possibility of getting that way and then also, um, citizens are, like, here. They're thinking, they're asking, um, if we would help them out. But again, you need manpower to do that.
I think you really have to figure out what the, what the costs are going to be.
Right, we, you know, what?
Because, because at a twenty-three thou-
You can't, you can't tell people, oh, we're going to do this, and then we find out that, you know, it isn't going to cost more than fifty thousand. It's going to, and how many years do we have to leave it at that? There is, there's a time limit too, that isn't it every couple of years, then you can go back and ask for more money, you know? But if you ask it out.
Rochelle, you, you were figuring the max, weren't you?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I've been figured that the max, and I know you don't need, you won't need that much.
I don't know if I'd figure it, right, but just short figure, but wouldn't even have to touch it, would it? At twenty-three thousand man hours, damn.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to figure twenty-five, thirty bucks an hour, I just figured twenty, you know?
And so you have to, and there's a lot of, lot of, lot of thought needs to go into this. I mean, as to how you're going to pay for it, how many you need. We have four ALS people now on the service, but, you know, there's a lot of options to do before you fill up with any figures. There's a lot of, a lot of options, I mean, that have been brought up before as far as how to make this all work, but.
I think if you could talk to Sioux Center, Orange City, C L D.
Yeah, yeah, I do, I, you know, I just wanna, I wanna, somebody that has a real handle on how they're doing this, you know? And you wonder, I mean, is this, if we make it a central service and we do this tax, or, um, is this solely the ambulance's revenue? Or is the county going to use this as a supplement? So what my budget is and then you're gonna, we're gonna try and tax for a second half?
Well, first you gotta get revenue, and if you can't get the hospital to play nice like they do in the other counties, how do you get the revenue?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first step has got to be to sit down and figure out just how many, what, what we need. How many people you'd have to have on full-time to cover twenty-four seven and start with that, right? How much it costs for benefits and salary and all that other stuff? And then, then at least you got a number to start with, right? I mean, we don't even know what the numbers are yet.
Yeah, but you gotta get some participation from the hospital.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how it works in their other county.
Well, a lot of the counties, like Sioux County, Orange City ambulance is hospital-based, Sioux Senator's hospital-based, Spencer's hospital-based, you know? So.
And it makes that.
They, they, they own the ambulance, so they get the money.
Because they're bringing in the customer, they're the one collecting the money off of it, so right now, we're providing a free service for the hospital.
Their focus is to treat people at their facility. If they wanted to extend their business model to bring people to their facility, they can consider that, and I'm all open to that. But absent that, are we really thinking, look at boards, we're just all good? We need to consider that for our citizens. I don't think, possibly, needs to be made the bad guy because they have a business model, service delivery within their facility.
And we need to.
If they want to come to the table, excellent, that's wonderful. But I don't think we need to be running them down because that's not what they're currently doing.
Well, it's not my fault, that's not what they're currently doing, but I'm telling you, we're at our hospital.
We don't know that. We brought in the hospitals outside the county, do they get into our revenues? So I don't think we need to run our hospital down.
But every, every county has a hospital that has that service except for us.
Well.
Okay, so we can just, just stay on the service and expect the hospital to do it?
That's a discussion we need to have with the hospital.
I don't think that's.
Who was talking about this fan of the service, but we need to have them be a better community partner with the program.
That would be true, but, um, I think we need to stand on our own two feet if we're going to be doing this. You know, we have to have, we have, we should, we should provide a service for our county. We want people to move here, we want people to live here.
There's a lot more that goes into that than just saying, hospital needs to contribute or whatever.
Yeah, but you gotta sell this to the voters.
We pick up a lot of people in Ocheaton, uh, Main City, Harris, that do not want to come to Sidney Hospital. So we take them to Spencer, we take them, we take them to Worthington from Harris, Ocheaton area. Ashton even, they don't want to, we get a lot of people that want to go to Sheldon. So how do you figure that in the equation?
That's where the doctor.
So do you have to, if you start talking that the hospital needs to step up and contribute, then do we have to bring everybody to Sidney Hospital even if they don't want to go there or, you know, that's a, I, I don't know.
How do you sell it to the voters then?
Yeah, I don't know. I think where you gotta start is by explaining how essential it is to have EMS in the county. Just like fire, we can't go without fire protection. We can't go without EMS services. We have a lot of elderly people. We would never bring in any more business if you didn't have EMS in the county. I mean, there's a whole lot that goes into this, but.
Yeah, we would put it all on the, on the.
And, and you can't expect, you know, I, I hear a lot throughout the years of, well, we'll just have Sheldon, we'll just have O'Brien County come in and cover. Well, they're not going to do that for free, so you're going to pay them for that.
They're not going to do it for free before you're going to do it for free.
We're still going to have to make them.
Okay.
So, I know.
Because that's what, uh, other towns are doing right now. If they can't have an ambulance, they pass those twenty-eight E agreements with other towns that do have an ambulance service. So if in the event you need an ambulance, say we need an ambulance in Ashton, if we have no ambulance in Ashton, we would pay Sheldon to come in and take that call because you're taxing that other ambulance service. So they're going to want somebody to do that.
When we go to Little Rock, do we go to Little Rock and they have to come back to Sidney? Do we get, that's free then, we don't?
Right, for, for, um, for right now, that is. We, um, if we go to Little Rock and we pick up a patient, um, yeah, we just get the revenue off the call.
How much time do you guys have? Because we did have a nine o'clock.
Pardon?
We did have a nine o'clock. How much time do you guys have?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so.
Yeah, we'll, we can do that when we come back to it.
Yeah.
Sorry, Senator.
Yeah, sir, Kate, that's the thing, huh? I always had an option, I was altered some too, but. Then you have word to receive, but excuse us.
I. Well, that's all right now, I'm more. But if one guy, you guys, uh, wanted to start it, so. Yeah, I'm very. I wasn't taking very long, I'm just, I'm just here to share our annual report, um, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. I gave this to the Board of Health in January, so Jason, sorry, you'll probably be bored, but.
You'll do it far better than I would.
Oh, well, so, um, just so you, um, get an idea of what we, um, the activities that we did the past year. So the first page is just, I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm just gonna, um, have a few highlights. The first page is just kind of, uh, um, the demographics of our county, and I just kind of highlighted a few things. Um, our race and ethnic origin, um, our, our Hispanic population, of course, is, is higher than the state, um, percentage. And you see that, you know, of course, on the rise in, in our county. So, um, that has implications for, for service needs. And then our age, um, distribution, of course, we know we're an elderly county, and so that kind of outlines where we are percentage-wise compared to, um, the state percentages. And then, um, persons in poverty, um, under the economy, we have nine point three percent. The state average, I don't know why I put that in there, was ten point two. And persons without health insurance under sixty-five, ours is seven point six, and the state average is six point zero. So we do have a higher percentage of individuals under sixty-five that do not have health insurance. And that, of course, has a lot of implications for, for our county as a whole and for, for public health in this county, so. And then just in the lower, uh, part of the page here, um, the twenty-twenty-one county health ranking. We ranked sixty-one out of ninety-nine as far as an overall health ranking, um, in our, in our state. And I, I don't remember exactly what entity studied and sent out this information, but ninety-nine being the worst and number one being the best. And so we are definitely, um, you know, at sixty-one, we definitely have a lot of issues that we need to address. And so, um, that's a lot of implications for, for public health activities, so. Anyway, um, then the next page is just our, um, table of organization. Very self-explanatory with, um, listing of our public health services. And with the, the organizational chart, the relationships that we have with the Iowa Department of Public Health, the Board of Health and the Board of Supervisors, so. The next page is very self-explanatory, just a listing of individuals who deserve, yeah. And then it's to the, um, page entitled Direct Care Services. Just an outline of the services that we provide, a little bit about what those services are. Homemaker services, um, primarily funded by private pay or sliding fee scale and local county funds. Our, our Iowa Department of Public Health grant beginning this next year, FY twenty-three, um, has, has changed a lot. And Diane was at our last meeting, our community health consultant, she attended our last meeting and sort of gave the Board of Health an overview of, of the changes. And so the focus of those dollars, um, Iowa Department of Public Health wants the focus to be very much population health versus, um, individuals. And so in the past, we've been able to use those dollars for homemaker services. Um, we haven't had a lot of individuals who depend on them, on, on those funds, but every now and then, we do have, um, a few people who do not pay the full fee and need, um, subsidized funds. So beginning in FY twenty-three, those funds, we will not be allowed to use those funds for, for the homemaker services. Um, we, we have about six or seven clients on homemaker right now, so it's not a huge program. Um, but we do have, we have one individual on Elder Bridge and one individual that is supplemented with county funds. The others are in private pay, so it just kind of, but I know the Board of Health feels very strongly that, that we not drop that program. Um, it's not a huge program, but it's, it's there for individuals. It's not a huge program, but it's, it's there for individuals, you know, who, who definitely need it. And so, just because the grant funds no longer pay for that service, the Board of Health felt that we wanted to continue to support that, so. And that's just a little bit of our numbers there from FY '21 and then the past couple of years. And then Best Care for Better Babies is our, is our home visitation program that we serve pregnant women and parents of newborns through one year of age. It's funded through the Early Childhood Iowa grant dollars, and we're part of a four-county Lakes region, early childhood Iowa region. And again, self-explanatory of our numbers, our visits went up pretty dramatically, and our families pretty much stayed the same. We had 29 families, we had a set of twins, so that's why we had 31 children. But I think we're seeing our families continue with the program a little bit longer. And we do offer the program through one year of age, whereas before the program was zero to six months of age. So, we've extended it to, for the children, you know, for families with children up to one year of age, which is nice because some of them need that continued services and so, you know, they, and some, if mom goes back to work, she may not want it for four years, so. Foot care clinics, we continue to provide that service. That is completely paid privately by clients. That took a real decrease, we saw a real decrease in our numbers in FY '21, and that was primarily due to COVID because we did expand that service for a period of time during that year when COVID cases were high. And then disease investigation is something we are required to do by the state. That's not an activity by choice, that is a requirement. So, there are diseases that are recordable, and we do surveil and follow up. And so, that's just the listing of the disease investigations that we conceded, and we put that information into our computer database. And we had two cases of latent TB infection, and we do the medication management for that. And that typically is a nine-month course of medication supplied by the state. And we dispense it to the individual on a monthly basis, so they have to remain compliant. And it's very important that they're compliant, so we, we expect them to come in every month and pick up their body of medicine, at which time we assess them for any side effects and that kind of thing, so. Then we dealt with, of course, the pandemic. And just a summary of our activities, our first case was on April 10th of 2020, and we did a lot of investigations, contact tracing, and did a lot of planning and preparation, and began vaccinations on December 22nd. And then, of course, continued into 2021 up through about the month of April, I would say. And that's when things really started to, kind of, the demand dropped off, and so, April, May, right in there. So, anyway, we offer all three vaccines. We, we have the Johnson &amp; Johnson, we have the Finder, and we have, of course, the Moderna. The Moderna was the one we gave primarily, but we do offer it to everybody. And we are also offering it to the pediatric population. We haven't had a lot of demand for that at all, but we do have it available. We have the pediatric preparation, so, and our, yeah, our clinics are pretty regular numbers. And then, of course, we continue with the childhood and adolescent immunizations. And I just listed the state test benchmarks for us. And so, for two-year-olds, of course, the national goal is 90%. And so, the state looks at all two-year-olds in O'Cheaton County and whether or not they are fully vaccinated with all of the recommended vaccines that a two-year-old should have. And we're at 77%. We have, we have a small number of two-year-olds in our county. A lot of, a lot of young families and children seek their care outside of our county. And so, it is a little bit difficult to track this because this figure, this percentage comes from IRIS, which is our computer, the immunization database. And not all clinic information systems interface with IRIS. So, it's, we have to sometimes do a little digging, but, and then, of course, with a small number of kids, you have two or three kids that aren't in compliance, and that makes your percentage difficult to weigh out, so. But we continue to, and we have, we have a lot of, more and more, we're seeing more and more families into our county coming in. And, and not that they're all infants, but some of them do have an infant or two here and there. Lot of immigrant population, they're coming, and they don't have the vaccination records. And so, they're walking into our door, in our door, and the kiddo might be 18 months old, and there's no record. And, of course, so then we have to start from scratch, you know, we have to begin with the very beginning, you know. Well, when that child is 24 months old, he or she obviously is not going to be in compliance because already when they show up at our door, they're 18 months and they've had nothing. So, when we put them in the database, you know, they're, they're, they're out of compliance right away. So, so we have some of those too, and, and, of course, you know, seeing more and more. Adolescents, our numbers, our percentages are a little better there. We keep working, and, of course, a lot of these vaccines are required for school. We have a T-dap and a meningitis that's required for every seventh grader going into school. And then we have a second meningitis for every senior that's going into senior year. So, that is a little bit more of a, of a way to get those kids. And we have done school-based clinics in the past, last year we did not, but I hope to get there again this spring before school's out and get, it'll be this year's sixth graders, we'll get them done, and then this year's juniors. So, then next fall, when they're ready to go to school, they'll, they'll, they'll have their immunization. Any questions? And then I did include three little flu on here, and I, I should have, but we do also do flu clinics. We start those usually right in October. We go out to various businesses. And then we also did a large school-based clinic, which was really effective in reaching a lot of the school ages. So, that definitely lowers our time we use. We have both BMD or state vaccine, and then we also have private vaccine available, so. Then we go to the school and we audit the immunization records, and that's just kind of a summary of, and we work closely with the school nurse. And for the most part, our, our school records are in good shape. We have some kids that get religious and medical infections, but other than that, everybody's in. And the provisional, under percentage of valid certificates, P R O V, that means a provisional, that means a child has started their immunization schedule, they have had some vaccines, but they are not complete. And usually, that's a representation of some of the kids that, that come that have no records. And we have to, you know, start them over, and, and it takes time to get them up to date because you can't just give everything at once. There's, there's certain intervals between vaccines. So, you, you know, you might give a certain vaccine, and then you have to wait two months before you can give another dose of that vaccine. So, that's why some of these provisionals are here, but we, we are working on those. And then the next page is a couple pie graphs that kind of outlines our budget. And our revenue is the top circle, and I just kind of showed a breakdown of our revenue, the different grants, the local public health services grant, our immunization reimbursement, both our grants and our third party because we do bill insurance and we bill Medicaid. Now, we can't bill Medicaid for vaccine because we use state vaccine on anyone with Medicaid. So, we can only bill for administration. So, for a Medicaid child, we receive $19.38 for, for our time and our supply. But the vaccine is free from the state, so we have, we don't purchase that. But on a kiddo that walks in with health insurance, then we use our private stock of vaccine, which we purchased, but then we're able to bill that insurance. And some, and most all insurance is paid because it's preventative healthcare. So, we are able to, to, you know, get decent reimbursement from that. And our ECI fund, that kind of varies every year depending on what we apply for. But last year was rated at $40,000, and we, we used those funds completely. Emergency preparedness was lower, county funds, and then our mental latience and our self-pay. And then, of course, our public funding really added a lot to, to our revenue graph. And then the bottom pie graph is a breakdown of our expenses. And, of course, salary and benefits being the largest portion applied, overhead, and purchase of services, the services that we pay to a bear at home, so we can, we contract with a bear at home to provide homemaker home health services. Because we do not employ the home health aides. They are employees of a bear at home, and we have a contract, so then we pay them.
Just brought up a bunch of discussions at the Republican Public Health Board meeting. And just point out that the almost $40,000 difference between the revenues and expenses is covered by the hospital.
Right.
By the hospital, so they are community partners in any way.
A hospital subsidizes a number of our programs, yeah.
And we authorized up to $125,000 for local county funds last fiscal year, no, this conference.
Right, this one was just a hundred, yep, yep, this one was just a hundred.
But that made me sure that they're applying only what truly meets public health needs them for those county funds. So, we're, different, that's why there's a difference there, that it's not a full check at home.
Yeah, and then we did get some, well, the COVID funds came into play too.
That affected it too.
That affected it, that we didn't use quite all that money, but, yeah.
But if your revenue was less than your expenses, shouldn't you have included the $100,000?
That's what, the chair, what we got asked is why are we using that full amount?
Well, there's activities that, that we do that aren't necessarily county activities, you know, they're more hospital activities. So, we don't bill everything to the county.
What percentage would be hospital activities?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to, because we do some employee health activities in our office, and that would be for the hospital. Employee health would be directly a hospital activity. And, and just for example, I'm just gonna use Best Care for example because I, I know that we, we only charge $182 a visit. And I, I know it costs more to provide Best Care services than that. And so, you know, I, we will be looking at that this next grant year because, you know, we are, it costs a lot more money than what we're receiving. We, we only go per visit to the, to the ECI fund, to the ECI grant. And, well, this past year was a lot of work administratively for credentialing. And so, you know, that, that is not reimbursed by ECI. That's, that's a lot of time that I spend on the program that isn't billable because we don't bill ECI for administration, or we bill just per visit.
But ECI didn't pay for the credential for the Best Care for Children program for everybody to get credentials for that?
Well, the Best Care for Children program isn't credentialed.
You had to get that teacher's.
Parents' teachers.
Parents' teacher's training, and everybody you've got at all the other counties, they paid for.
They paid for that training, you got, yep, yes, they did, yes, they paid for the training, but, yeah.
And you guys set the reimbursement rates at each different locale, and that's what you set the cost to provide that service, so the reimbursement rate is what you guys paid.
Right, right.
So, if it needs to be different than this next cycle of grants, you guys need to all get together as a group and say, hey, this is what it costs now to provide this service. Because you guys set the reimbursement rate, so.
Yeah, we did, yep.
Like, for this hour, is that three or, or four RNs?
Three RNs.
Three RNs.
Three RNs, and then Alicia is full-time, um, administrative assistant.
What is an RN? Like, an hour? Would it be similar to an ambulance person?
Yeah, or that.
Or is it?
I guess an RN is, what, 40 plus?
Yeah, I would say between 35, yeah, 35 to 40.
It depends where you're at, too.
Yeah, and in what area you're in, you know. Typically, hospital nurses make more, you know, compared to public health is a little bit less. So, I would say right around that, 30, 33 to 35. And then the medicine, we usually figure about 33% for medicine.
So, is the salary number going to be similar to something for EMS to be, to be less?
EMS would be less.
Would be less for us?
Oh, yeah. No, and the rest is just kind of a, a listing of collaborations, things we do. Any other questions? I just think it's, you know, I just wanted to share this, nothing, but just so you have an idea of what's going on.
Sounds good.
Anytime you have questions, you know where we are, up in that little brick building there, my hospital, so just come on up.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, guys.
If it does, for, for, for five minutes before.
You can check that, that's, that's, you would have done.
Get it all figured out.
Are you hot or cold?
I'm cold.
I'm like, we turn it up.
Keeps cold. So, this salary rate would be way higher than what it would be if it was on the, for a local county.
All right, I turned it up.
Yeah, not useful, yeah. I think you actually would be less, but I bet you're going pretty much.
That's, what, three, three RNs?
Office.
Office, yeah. Gets you on board for EMS, with, or, and, whatever.
But then on the, some EMS site, I don't think you can get five or three, four, no?
How many would you need?
Twice, yeah. I, would you?
Pardon? Oh. Yeah, staff.
Staff.
How many would you need? I'm right off the top of my head, I think maybe six. What did you guys think?
That's what I said.
So, then you'd be looking at that 800.
I still want to, we still would want to use our volunteers. I still want to, we still would want to use our volunteers, you know.
It would be a small, the more, just, uh, eight, seven?
There's more, yeah. Because eighty-four percent of that is salaries.
Yes. Eighty-seven thousand percent. Does the hospital get, do those, uh, home health, do they get benefits out of the hospital or what do we get?
Yeah, without the county.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think, well, I, I assume it's the same at the hospital. Do you know that?
So, would you fund supplies and stuff out of that same levy amount along with the salaries? Or would that come from somewhere else?
No, but, um.
Like what you're saying, where do our supplies come from now then?
Um, I think it runs around probably close to eight thousand.
For supplies?
For supplies. Our motor vehicle was, I didn't give it right now, but it's, it's probably around ten. There's six of them.
But the supplies are billed, do they pay it?
Um, sometimes if they have regular insurance. But if you are Medicare, Medicaid, you know, or Iowa full healthcare, no. It's a base that they pay and that is it, then the rest you write off.
So, you're talking then between, let's say, occasional replacement of an ambulance maintenance, employees, supplies, whatever you got for overhead. You're probably close to nine hundred thousand, two million bucks.
Probably.
Would that be pretty ballpark?
Million bucks, we're getting about.
But I only got four hundred and some odd thousand available left.
And we only have, or regenerate only about what, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue a year right now? You know, it's, that's pretty hard, isn't it? You know, it is. The wheels on the bus are going, if we're different, going to do this, the wheels on the ambulance are going to go round and round if we're going to be doing that. If you're going to have eight employees or six employees, we need to be a lot better this year than what we are right now.
So, then you're going to need to get twenty eighty agreements signed with our outside neighbors not to be providing free services to make this thing work.
Or if you don't do this at all and we pass it as an essential service, our county is going to be signing those twenty eighty agreements for the other towns to come in and take care of you.
So, just for an example, in twenty twenty-one, her expenses was four hundred and seven thousand five sixty. And then the revenue that we received for twenty twenty-one was two hundred and twenty-two thousand twenty-two dollars.
But that one might increase the situation to like four seventy. I'm wondering if this one.
Do you have any idea what the potential revenue would be by signing twenty eighty agreements with the people that we're providing services to?
I would, I'm kind of hoping, I think that's where, that's where the other towns are trying to get this essential service passed. You know, they can get those twenty eighty agreements. So, not only will they pay them to go to town to take up the money, but the revenue from all the hospitals.
They have a budget for that, their budget. So, do you have an idea of what part of the company would be?
Not a lot. So, this is open in the rural area now that clearly passed the essential service.
I thought it was countywide, so I thought everything got to one another. It's my understanding, you know, it's, yeah.
Where, where are you seeing? The counties are going to be passed double. If they can determine if the city.
So, then the city would have, you can, some, some ambulances are city-owned. So, they are making, and they're asking the city, yeah, they're asking their city to pass that.
No, you're not necessarily, the county is the city for them. Yeah, I don't know, the county would do it also, I'm not for sure.
Yeah.
So, would that levy be for every parcel in cities as well, that like five cents?
That's how I'm interpreting that.
I didn't know if it was just a rural service or if it was going to be a, it's not certain.
I, I think it's countywide. That's how I'm interpreting that, but it depends on.
It's also county ambulance and we, we provide services to every city in the county. But it's still county-owned, so.
But you don't have to have twenty eighty agreements between the cities?
Not, it's also a county, no.
Just the ones outside of the county.
Correct.
So, I'm just curious, the Senate filed last year, they changed, essential services also changed. Emergency medical services districts, so we have a research path that's something to establish a countywide district. Versus. Aren't we already a countywide district?
Well, I don't know if that's considered like a benefit.
They should bring in a place trustees. Don't jump too fast on this. You have an election on proposed levy and candidates for trustee. You have trustee that oversees versus an advisory council.
Yeah, I have to read up on that, a hundred percent, like all that involved. I don't know, like, is that a kind of wider district?
I don't. I guess I would like. A presentation or suggestion for activities as to why one over the other. Looks to me like we could always have declared an essential service. We have the insurance tax and the property tax available, they just modified. And there's a lot of underlining in this bill, so I mean, they added a lot, which doesn't always encourage me. That means it's easier or better. Where do you guys want to go from here?
I think that's more information.
A lot more information.
I need some numbers to know what this is going to cost.
Yeah.
And what's, and what's it taking? Where would be a good place to, I don't know, you really talked to me to figure out what.
You're going to have to ballpark and put together something for how many employees you think you're going to need, what your average cost for ambulance maintenance and all the rest of that stuff is and replacement.
I talked to, like, Lawrence City, who said, the ones that are doing this and see what, how they're doing, what they're doing. Is there going to be like a average call or something where those? Because it's going to be a loss.
Yeah.
We don't have a business. If that's what you want to call it. You don't have enough, enough call volume to support this a hundred percent. But you have too much of a call volume to not have any service. You're right on the.
So, what's the happy medium employee wise?
That's what we got to figure out. I mean, I could make some calls, we, I know a few service directors that have full-time employees. So, I think first we got to figure out how many employees you need to run a full-time service and then benefits and, uh.
What do you, salary?
Can you do a combination of? Yes.
Yeah, we would do a combination of part-time.
Part-time.
Volunteers.
I'm thinking we can get volunteers for the six PM to six A overnight. A lot easier than we can get volunteers for the day shift calls, you know what I mean? So, if you have full-time people for the day and then volunteers overnight, that would be the, the ultimate way to run this.
So, those people, if a person is out of town, do they have a facility where they stay at, sleep?
That's what, that's another thing you have to think of. If you have full-time employees, they're going to need someplace to stay.
If they don't live in the county.
They'll have to be by the ambulance, at least within five minutes of the ambulance.
And you can use these tax dollars to support a building, you know, by, by something that will pay for it.
Is there anything?
It is a lot, it's a lot to go through, okay? You know, because you want to make the correct decision, especially when you're going to go out. We're going to go out to the public and.
So, you might have to figure out what it would cost to add on like our existing ambulance garage. Put on a, a living space on the end where the office space is now? Just one option. Or buying a house in town, cheap house in town that you would buy for a stay at. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, obviously, we can't pay hotel rooms for people for three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
That, and you're going to have to find their summers too. You have to bring, you can't just keep watching them, you know, it's not enough. You know what I mean? I mean, that's what, that's the unique, that was the unique part of having a, uh, the hospital-based service. Because then they would have.
Something for them to do, yeah.
But that's kind of, kind of irrelevant to this discussion, ain't it?
Not really, because your call volume doesn't match what you want to have for employees. And then what do you like, I mean, do we make them the courthouse again?
I hear you.
Right.
That's what I'm explaining, so. There's not enough calls, we're, we're right on the verge of not having enough calls to keep people busy and having too many calls not to have people. But if you need people, you need people. I mean. That's why there's a lot of, that kind of discussion's got to go on. Absolutely, absolutely. Well, you're going to have a hard time hiring a paramedic and telling them that, you know, they, they're going to work as a paramedic, but then, you know, you got to go to lawns or something because they can go down the road and work as a paramedic.
Take the wash, man. We've got a lot of.
But you know what I'm saying, they have to agree with you a hundred percent. You probably have to think more as instead of six employees, three employees, and they try to stagger the, the volunteers.
Right.
Yeah. In, you know, because I don't think you can, you can afford six full-time guys. Like just like six, because there's not enough for them to do.
And the, and the thing of this is that, uh, going back to the six P to six A. And if you use your volunteers, now you got to remember that's not their full-time job. So, if they get called out at two, three o'clock in the morning to do a transfer to Omaha, you're going to lose them. And that, and that's where we're, that's where we find probably a little bit of our problem in, in our town too is that, you know, that two o'clock, three o'clock call to go pick somebody up off the floor, then you got to get up at five thirty, six o'clock before you're ready to come up, you know? Really can't expect volunteers to do that. I mean, that, that actually, and there, maybe have a volunteer until midnight possibly. But after that, you're going to have to have somebody that's getting paid to.
We have volunteers that probably six, sixteen to six A already, so.
Yeah.
I don't see that being too much.
And that is, and that is one of the, the threats is the fact of getting up at that time in the morning.
Well, I think we need more information, I think.
Yeah, we're just, I mean. We, but we just, yeah.
Think it's probably a good idea, but.
Well, we just need to all really be thinking about, you know, how this can work.
We should have that.
No, we, you know, we have to have sixteen A notice after this resolution and then we have to have a board and then they have to come back to the board. Um, August, I believe is the deadline to have anything on the ballot in November, November. End of August, I believe.
Board would need to be, and what needs to be on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot of steps.
I read Senate File six fifteen, that was passed and signed last year. That addresses both the districts and the EMS essential service. I think that's due, printed out there.
Yeah.
We need to be, first, you're aware of what the options are.
Just going to break the process of what you want to do.
Sure.
You know, we're going to run out of time, you know, if we don't start it later.
Well, let's, keep working on it.
Bring some part of data.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. Finish this meeting or?
Uh, we'll skip later.
Good.
Well, as we discussed before, you know, about this insurance on this tractor, kind of wondering what you guys come up with, whether we're going to go with the eighty-five or the, with cash value or if we're going to go for the replacement of liking kind for a hundred and thirteen thousand.
What do you think, Mike?
Liking kind, I can't, I don't know. Either way, we're going to have to spend forty-five thousand dollars to get a tractor. Whether you go with a used one with liking kind, get the hundred and thirteen or you can go with a new sixty-one fifty-five. Um, you, you know, they do have twelve thousand five hundred dollars concession, government concession. That's, you know, for that cost that you see on that tractor there, that hundred and thirty-eight five, they took twelve thousand five hundred dollars off of that, or, you know, to get down to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, you know, for the government concession, so it's.
There's no deal on the.
I could call bills in and that's, uh, you know, that's where they stand. And then evidently, there was a couple of board members at ISA and they're.
Secretary Agar, and then he said, oh, no, you can replace that, covers everything. And then the final email was, as long as it's new or better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. When I, when I adjusted what we had to look at, what was that tractor worth at the day that it was wrecked? Not a month later, but the day, uh. Well, that's right, but it still was more important than the day it was wrecked. Did they have any numbers to prove what it was worth?
Yeah, they, uh, they sent up, you know, some of their numbers. I thought you guys had that. Yeah, we, it was a couple. That was a bit, you know.
Okay, I get, I get this.
But, you know, the ones that they, that I found with, uh, the tractors that they had for pricing was, we have twenty-two hundred dollars on our tractor. So, for the same price, it's a thousand hours more to fifteen hundred hours more, which, you know, we put on three hundred and fifty to probably three hundred and fifty hours a year. So, half a thousand more hours to fifteen hundred, that's like, you know, four, four years different, you know?
But my question is, when did you get those numbers? Was that a month later, two months later?
Oh, it was probably within a month, you know, when, when I got them numbers, you know? And that email that you have, I don't know what the date was on that there. For January twenty-sixth. That was a little one from Kyle. I don't have exact dates for that, but.
Because I know that's what I ran into a lot, they'd give numbers and their stuff went up in, in the meantime.
Right.
Since that was wrecked, it hasn't changed that much. Hasn't, I haven't kept track of the tractors.
Well, here's the email that I got from Kyle, this was December first. This is, uh, from C and D Kyle out here, you know? He sent this around and this is what he thought our tractor should be when, you know, at the time of the accident. And this is December first and that's going.
How much was that?
I think I forwarded that email on to you, Jason, I do believe.
Okay, sure. Two thousand fourteen sixty-one seventy R. I could just say it clearly. Three, five thousand. And four thousand hours. Where's it at, twenty-two hundred and eighty?
Right.
Twenty-two thousand, yeah. About half, not quite, twelve.
Yeah. And I checked that price, you all.
I know it was thirteen, right?
Yep. But I know them, uh, used tractors are, they move fast. Because I know a couple of them are already gone that I've been looking at, you know? And I even don't call them every week.
I think the insurance is over twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. Have you talked to them, Jason, what was their reason for not, that's what it was worth, that's what it was worth? Or they're not going to give them that or? They, he provided the comps that each of them was eight thousand. Eight seven five, the high one, two eight fives and one eight seven five. But like Mike said, they each have significantly more hours than what our unit had.
And the hours make up all the difference in value.
Understand that, and ours is less on the, yeah.
Yeah, so we should have got more than the ones they finally doubled the hours on.
The bills not going to have for us on that?
It's, it was up to ICAC, no, his, his, uh, guy, that's what he was following was what they were saying, you know? And, uh, that John Larkin, the one that I was dealing with, the adjuster, he went up to his boss, two people up above there, and that's what he came up with. Because they were originally only gonna, gonna, gonna give us ninety-four five, but for replacement costs. But they went up to a hundred and thirteen thousand one twenty-five or whatever, or one sixty. So they did come up from their original claim for replacing, replacement cost. But the cash value is still the same.
I guess I'm just confused on why. It's, it's probably eighty-seven to one thirty, it shouldn't make any, to me, it shouldn't make any difference. What, what kind of tractor you buy back?
And.
I don't get that part.
I guess, I, you read in our, uh, policy, because it did say something in there about cash value or replacement cost, you know? Um, I read that with bills and that's what they just keep giving me.
Well, we're only gonna seriously look at, uh, if we, uh, hold on to our insurance again and have it available.
Check that, we definitely need to do that.
They might have given us that over the last two weeks. It seems like they're not budgeting, I don't know why we didn't request that, but in case I talk to someone at ICAC and no one there, and we're spinning our wheels.
I've done what I can do to try and get, I, I mean, if you wanna put more bite into it, you're gonna have to go to attorney or something, I'm guessing, to try and get more.
Yeah, I agree, we're probably stuck, but if we get a serious look at it, we'll have some of the insurance.
We signed on to the policy that's set fast and we didn't see it, I'm sure we didn't read every page, but I don't think they're being. I don't agree, the guys said we could disagree on the ninety-four thousand drop to eighty-nine five. Yeah, I think that's a bit odd, but they did provide some justification for it, so I don't know how much it's worth fighting. But, yeah, the language says like or better, so a lower model, I think, language of policy would not be, have available to it. And most other policies we get wouldn't even have the twenty percent above language. So for light model, we wouldn't be talking a hundred and thirteen thousand available, we'd be talking ninety-four. So there is some benefit to the policy yet, even though it's.
I started on conservative.
So which one of these do you wanna go with, like?
I had talked with, I'll let you, I had talked to, uh, Kyle out there too. He said that the, the sixty-one fifty-five would do whatever.
Yeah, that's, and that's why I went with the smaller tractor, you know? If we gotta spend forty thousand dollars, or forty-five thousand dollars to get the hundred and thirteen, we just will spend the forty-five thousand dollars to get rid of the tractor that's five that did the, that's my feeling. Because otherwise you're gonna spend, oh, what do I got here? Okay, if we go with liking kind, we'll spend forty-nine thousand dollars, or forty-five thousand dollars to get a used tractor, a little bit bigger than what I want. We'll spend forty-nine thousand dollars and get what we want and be brand new.
I think it'd be foolish not to go with new.
I'd make a motion to go along with Mike's recommendation.
Motion? For Mike's sixty-one fifty-five, then?
I think that was Mike's recommendation.
Support. Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion period.
Then we'll beat up on our insurance kind. You're not, you're not gonna get this tractor for.
They got, they, they had one, they had a sixty-one fifty-five, because they, that number there was a common tractor and they ordered a couple, so, I mean, it might be in the pipeline for us to put our name on and we could have it real shortly.
That was last week, they had it.
Okay, they did, yeah.
That was last week, so.
Yeah, so it did come in and it was still there.
Then you had it, but they haven't.
There, C and, C and D had it.
In there. Okay.
Thanks, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Finish up, or?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Consider North Plus Mining and Development Commissions under the Administration approved by the Washington. Twenty-six, one one, twenty-two. Address the assistance of staff of North Plus Allopland and Development Commission. Is this for that zoning?
And they sent their pricing out, that was even without taking with them. It's by the hour by the job, is what I'm watching. We'll have to hire everybody here.
Everybody get that, or any questions for that?
Mike?
Is that a contract or?
Program.
Are you a daddy or?
No, a monthly program.
Well, we have to provide ninety days to cancel.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a lifetime contract. Not a contract.
Is this out here?
Right.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Got this out.
So we do very minimal, we're not just zoning stuff, so this, it probably would be very costly to, versus employing someone.
Sarah has a, a couple of public hearings this week before she's done, so I don't know anything else.
And that was for those, that old John Neers are out there.
And then you go and something else too, or if there's two public hearings.
I don't know, we identified there is a zoning administrator, but she did utilize some of these services.
Did she get questions?
So we got the initial part at that time. In the long run, I guess it, they could, I can see it in the house potentially yet, but I think this is a good, and I'll make a motion.
A motion?
A second.
Support. Mr. Panikov? I. Mr. Jolte? Aye. The lower? Aye. And I have all eyes. Then I guess one, beautiful. Give me that guess one. One more coffee for you. Any questions on Williams?
Fourteen forty-six in the whole possible water service.
Then make a motion to pay those names.
I'll support that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All those abstaining?
Then I make a motion on our.
Motion in support on us, are you all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same motion, motion period.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion period.
Everybody has to sign coins and stuff, so.
Oh, look who's standing out on the stage.
Apparently they're going to school, though.
We will have a joint branch district number three.
Today will be mostly just information for you today.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Motion approved, agenda? Support. Support. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And give, couple's twenty-four, forty, twenty-one minutes.
He should have gone there every year.
Motion approved, agenda? And a motion in support. You'll keep those minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion period. From this year on, uh.
Okay, well, uh, we're here to talk about that joint branch district number three, but it's really branch one fifty-two and then branch one fifty-two, one seventy-eight. And, uh, with me, you know, Spencer Pack, who is working on this project, you met him with Cole here at his fault.
Were you expecting trouble, it's probably your guy.
That's right. Uh, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of overview, uh, Spencer's gonna hand you out some, uh, flat information here. And, uh, and what we're talking about is the one fifty-two. Back in August, we had a informational meeting with the landowners. We had an informational meeting with the landowners of the overall watershed of one fifty-two. One fifty-two, the branch one seventy-eight feeds into, um, one fifty-two. And one seventy-eight is where the original petition came from for basically improvement of the one seventy-eight. One seventy-eight has an overall watershed of about six, sixteen hundred acres, is that correct?
Somewhere around there, fourteen hundred would be.
Fourteen hundred. Um, we also, the one fifty-two at the public hearing, at the lower end of, the lower end of one fifty-two, there is where branch one seventy-eight comes in off the side. So at the public hearing, we explained to them that, or at the information meeting, that we're looking for, have to have improved capacity on branch one fifty-two at a minimum up to, uh, the one seventy-eight. And at the public, or the informational meeting, landowners spoke to the fact of, well, let's, let's do consider a possible improvement to the overall one fifty-two. So we're, one fifty-two is this long leg that goes to the north. One seventy-eight's coming up through here. And then we also have a one seventy-eight seventy-eight, basically, which is about a forty-two hundred feet of additional improvement on that, uh, branch seventy-eight off of one seventy-eight. In consideration, as we're evaluating the overall watershed capacities of what the system needs, we started taking a look at, can we downsize the power system by using some detention in the system? Running water into a, basically an excavated detention basin to downsize the tie. The watershed, obviously, here in the middle, there is a large area of bottom wet ground and we pick up a lot of elevation north of there again. So up in Minnesota, we use detention basins basically on almost every drainage district because they have to control their outflow to the same outflow as what they currently have. So to improve their drainage, get the water out of there better, they model their watersheds and build in detention basins to control that discharge, but at the same time allowing water out of the worst-case areas to get out sooner while the detention basin is temporarily holding it and slowing down the water in other locations. Water quality in Iowa is the big issue. How do we, uh, address water quality on a voluntary basis? We started discussing the, uh, possibilities of using a combination detention basin, wetland in the mix of this thing. And we have had general discussions already with IDALS that I'm gonna allow Spencer to get into a little more of the detail of how this detention basin would work, how the wetland would work. Sheet two is the one that shows the general location of the detention basin.
That's correct, yeah.
Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to Spencer to start him giving an explanation of the detention basin system.
How many acres of that would be the detention basin?
Um, we'll talk about it, the, um, the total detention would be around, where the, uh, water surface area would be about seven acres and the total pond would be about ten and a half. We're, we're kind of looking at in the watershed here, as Ivan mentioned, is on this branch one fifty-two watershed on the right. As Ivan had mentioned, here in section twenty-three, you can kind of see, we can see a large area that wasn't planted. There is a significant old lake bottom there, I would say two hundred and fifty acres. And generally what's happening now when there's any sizable storm in the watershed is all the water from all the area drained this is raining down to this pond and then it's flooding out for weeks at a time, um, before it eventually drains out through this tie. So the only way for that water to leave is through this branch one fifty-two tile. As you can see, we've got about two and a half miles of tile just to outlet that area, uh, on one fifty-two there. So like Ivan had talked about, what can we do, um, you, you know, just straight drainage, you could put a massive pipe in there to drain the water as fast as possible, but that's really not feasible, um, for the amount of area draining in and for the fact that there's nowhere for the surface water to go. So we looked at is, this area is holding the water temporarily anyway, can we build in some sort of a formed detention basin to hold that water, hold the majority of the water, stop the rest of the problem to drain out, um, within the first two days so it's not moving in? So that's kind of what we looked at, that's the watershed we're gonna focus on. If you look at the second flat, it kind of shows a zoom in, um, to the northern part of that branch one fifty-two watershed, as well as that general preliminary location we have shown for that detention basin. Um, we also do have shown, you'll see a potential irrigation area, that's for a water reuse, that would be optional enough for the landowner, but we have that shown. Um, that pond is shown right there and basically what would happen is, uh, upstream of it, all of that tile that we have shown to be improved, would be improved, not let into the basin, there's another existing tile that would outlet into the basin. And then on the downstream end of the basin, um, the improved tile would serve as the outlet and then that improved branch one fifty-two tile would continue to the south, um, the rest of the way. And so, as Ivan kind of alluded to on the pond, um, there's kind of a combination we're looking at for preliminary design. So if you look at the cross section here, um, be fair with me, on the right-hand side would be upstream, so you can see that, uh, green, those two green lines, that would be the pipe coming in, um, the, the top, the tile upstream outletting into the pond. Then that solid black line would be the proposed grounds, um, proposed elevation of the pond. Then on the left side there, you've got those two, um, green lines, that's the outlet pipe, um, that would serve as the outlet for the pond. Within the pond, you'll see, uh, we have on the bottom, bottom left of the pond, you can see it says fifteen acre feet of permanent storage. So what we have shown there is, uh, roughly right now about two to three feet of permanent depth of water in the bottom of that pond. Um, and then above that, we have shown twenty-five acre feet of temporary storage, uh, which is basically the, everything above that to where the top of the pond is at, um, that, the tile water could be stored temporarily. So the reason we have, um, both the temporary and the permanent storage shown, as Ivan had kind of alluded to with the water quality aspect, um, with having that permanent storage on the bottom and leaving, um, some water in there at all times, there's actually, uh, a water quality benefit to that and IDALS, uh, would view that essentially as, as a wetland as well with the water sitting in there, um, over, uh, permanently. So we preliminary kind of brought this concept to IDALS and told them what we're looking to do with having permanent storage at the bottom, but then also having the temporary storage for the benefit of the drainage district. Um, and this was seen as an attractive project to them because of the, uh, water quality aspect to that. So they, uh, if the pond was constructed in this man. So, they, um, if the pond was constructed in this manner, uh, with the permanent storage included in the bottom, uh, IDALS, there would be the potential to do the project in conjunction with IDALS and they would be paying for the construction of the pond itself as well as deasement for the location of the pond. Uh, so, that's where the really big value with the permanent storage comes in. Uh, above that, the temporary storage is shown, uh, again, what's happening there is anytime there's a large storm event, on that tile water from the upstream side is gonna outlet into the pond and that pond is slowly gonna fill up, um, until it reaches the top of the temporary storage. And that temporary storage is holding that water, um, in the pond for, I would typically two days, maybe three days, um, after a storm event. And what that does is that provides additional capacity for the tile downstream, um, to get rid of water, holding it in the watershed, um, for a period of time, whereas now all that water is just flooding out of the crop land in that area. So, what we've found, um, through a lot of the previous projects we've done, um, modeling we've done with these storage basins, is that, um, there can be a reduction in tile size downstream with the implementation, um, of the pond. Without a pond or without any type of storage, um, you know, you might be, depends on the watershed, you might be looking at a half inch or a three-quarter inch, uh, drainage coefficient needed. If you incorporate the pond, you can likely lower that coefficient downstream, um, if it was a half inch to a three-eighths, or if it was a three-quarters, down to a half inch. Um, at that point, we're just kind of looking at the model of the watershed to see what size tile do we need to get rid of the water within two days on split, we don't want it not splitting out, um, after that. So, that's the big, um, advantage of the pond. I do have some numbers to kind of show the cost savings, um, that, that, um, portion could bring. Is there any questions about the general conceptual that we have shown here?
That's just like a spillway, I mean, it doesn't, as the pond gets so high that it goes over the...
Yes.
And takes the water away then?
Sure.
Yeah, and, and what, what is that like a factory?
No, well, this, this is just a excavated earth and seven acre pool. And then the, the, the normal drawdown for slow release, there would be a structure that is allowing water as it's coming in, we're releasing it at the same time, but it's going out slower. Big flows then, there's gonna be a second riser that would allow the big flows to start overtopping and going into the system.
And, and the way the pond is shown too, um, you actually see here, the pond, the water coming into the pond is only, is designed only to be the tile water. Um, if we did have a huge storm event and there was water flowing down that waterway, that would not be flowing into the pond, that would continue to flow down that waterway. So, the pond itself is only taking in tile water, um, for that temporary storage.
And that's how we're getting that downsizing is because we're only taking the tile water so we can slow it down in a sense and allow for a slower release on that.
Is that, is there already a pond there or is it just...
There, that's basically, if it's an old lake bottom, it floods out, you know, I'd say two hundred plus acres flood out.
So, downsizing that, um, would be the cost savings to build this pond? I mean, would there, would there be any big advantage or...
Well, this is where the wetland comes into it. Yeah, the downsizing of the tile system is the cost savings to the landowners. And with the fact that water, building the water quality concept into this detention basin is where we get the state of Iowa to throw money at building this wetland. And right now, on the table is that they would pay for the full construction of the detention basin and permanent wetland in a sense of the bottom. Now, we do have to meet criteria for true treatment wetland. You know, the, uh, CREP program, you've probably heard of, CREP's been around for a long time and CREP, you have to meet sizing criteria for, uh, proper treatment of the nutrients on minus wetland. So, that's the sizing of the detention basin, we have to also make sure we're making or meeting the wetland sizing, minimum sizing for the watershed that we're serving. And we are, uh, the criteria, the main criteria is you have to be, have a half of a...
Half of a percent.
Half of a percent, size-wise, of the basin has to meet a half a percent of the acres of watershed that you're serving on that tile system. So, that's what we've done in the conceptual design of the bottom portion of this, along with the detention basin and, um...
A lot of the cost of all this.
Yeah. And I'll turn back to you.
It's a very, it's ineffective space. That's basically the area where we're not having any temporary storage. That's, um, because the, so, you look, obviously because we have to have cover on the tile coming in, um, three feet of cover, that's basically space above the inlet tile where that tile is not gonna be filling that space for temporary storage, so it's just three feet of...
We can't flood out the tile system upstream otherwise we're, we're putting back...
Right, so it's, just because the fact the tile has to be three feet deep where it enters is why.
We don't have that second spillover shown, uh, Jerry, but there would be a second spillover at the height of that, uh, being effective.
So, on the cost estimates, I handed out two, um, sheets here, one packet, one sheet. The first one, that's a standalone sheet on the front, um, has proposed complete replacement. This is for that branch one fifty-two. This is, as I mentioned, the entire replacement of the whole system if you were to just put a tile in, um, it's a pretty large pipe that actually would start out as a sixty-inch, um, pipe. And you can see the total improvement cost for that, um, is right around three point six million, um, for that entire main, which is about, I don't know how long, probably about seven or eight miles long, so it's a big main. Um, the second packet that I gave you is the ultimate one, um, the integration of the storage pond. So, what this, front side of this packet is showing is the cost estimate, um, with the integration of the storage ponds, being able to do the smaller sized tile, still be, um, with the drainage. That improvement cost we have estimated at right around three point, uh, one, three million right now. Um, so, just the savings in the pipe size for the district, for that, uh, district for the main, um, obviously pretty significant, um, over four hundred thousand dollars just because smaller tile size needed, um, when you integrate the storage. On that packet, um, we also on each sheet have shown the cost, preliminary cost estimates for the other branch tiles, um, but that packet, the second page on the packet, has the preliminary cost estimate of the storage pond. Um, you can see construction costs as well as damages and such for that, um, you know, we have shown up to six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. But again, if we incorporate, um, the permanent storage with the water quality aspect, IDALS would be paying for the construction of the ponds as well as the easement, um, for putting, where they'd be putting the pond at.
So, there's over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of downsized of tile with the detention. If you had, if the landowners had paid for the detention basin, obviously, uh, it would, it wouldn't make sense. But with, uh, the water quality, wetland concept built in with the detention basin and IDALS coming through and paying for the whole thing, we're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars downsized savings to the landowners.
That's already a natural low area, isn't really the district's problem?
It's far...
Because the size of the area, it's, it's a two hundred some odd acres, but the natural low point in there.
Yep.
And obviously, when they put this in, it was adequate to drain it, it's not anymore, obviously, because of all the water.
I don't know if it ever was considered to be adequate, uh, even at the early standard.
Then why would you even have put it in then if it didn't allow you the ability to farm it?
They, all the, you know, they were farming it, obviously, if you had drought outs at the time when you had small grain, those type of things, there, it was a little slower runoff. Our storm intensities weren't as high as what we're getting now.
And there wasn't as much patterned tile as what there probably is over there as well?
No, that's correct.
And that?
So, but...
So, what's the long-term maintenance, um, on siltation for that seven acres, for that pond?
Yep, so, again, that pond is taking, uh, only tile water, so it's not taking surface water, the surface water's staying in the waterway. But that being said, um, obviously for like surface intakes or whatever, there could be some sediment that comes in the tile water. What we found in the ponds we've done in the past is it's very minimal, um, sedimentation. But that being said, as part of the pond design, there would be, um, call it like a four bay, um, on the inlet end where your, if you have your, uh, if you have your typical pond bottom, it would actually be kind of notched out a couple of feet deep right at the beginning and it'd be kind of a built-in settling basin, um...
How far is the buffer from that pond that they're gonna be able to farm up to?
So, what we, we have the pond, the water area being, um, about seven acres right now and then the total pond easement being ten and a half acres, um, so, and that ten and a half acres is just, uh, um, there's a little bit on the downstream end of an earthen, um, dike around it. And that's just to get that earthen dike installed and then once that's installed, we'd have any extra soil from the pond graded out at like a ten to one or twelve to one, um, so we could minimize how much buffer there had to be and then they could farm.
And so, IDALS is, the fact that we're keeping all surface water from coming in, they're not requiring the size of buffer that you would typically have on a true, just wetland?
Yeah, typical wetlands, if you had a ten acre pool, you had to have a fifty acre buffer. In this case, we're not taking the surface water and we're building the dike all the way around it to contain it, um, and then once we kind of get that built, we can just grade out at, I think, ten to one or twelve to one, uh, that would be fine.
So, we're truly treating only the tile water. And that's where the high nitrate loading is coming from and that's what IDALS is looking, you know, to get after. Uh, future, we, we did show a, uh, area here, uh, about the, uh, irrigation, potential irrigation. One of the other concepts that IDALS, the state of Iowa is studying is, uh, re, uh, basically reuse of your tile water, pumping it back onto the farm ground. They know that there's higher nitrate levels in that water, you pump it back out, irrigate the crop land, but they are only taking three or four sites and doing studies on right now. There is no cost shared dollars just for reuse of the water at this point. But, uh, the wet, wetland treatment, but the fact that we have permanent water in there, the landowner on his own could add irrigation and pump water from this, uh, to irrigate on his own ground and they would not, uh, 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 stop him from doing that. And so, he could build irrigation into this on his own ground, which is becoming more and more a, a issue with our longer periods of dry weather.
But then that, that pond wouldn't have any water, very little water, it ain't even, would it?
Well, um, you know, you, the tile system from the spring is basically, you know, going to continue to charge into the basin. You get fifteen acres of permanent water, acre feet of water sitting in there and it's always getting a recharge from the top. So, during the dry weather, he could be pumping out of that and as long as we get some recharge coming in, they will allow him to basically pump out of it.
And that would just, that would be the landowners, they, if they wanted to do that, it's completely on their own, nothing to do with the drainage district.
Right.
But that is an option for them, you know, as well for this.
Would you redesign the holding capacity of the pond if that's what they were interested in?
Could we add more?
You're really gonna get enough out of tile to replenish it enough to irrigate off of that holding area?
There would be, there'd be enough.
The fifteen acre feet would provide, I don't know what the slope type is, um, over an inch irrigation capacity.
We haven't done a lot on the irrigation side yet just because that's still gonna be up to the landowner. Um, preliminarily, we're just looking at providing between an inch and two inches on some sort of irrigation area that they would maybe look at on there, I mean, that's where the fifteen acre feet came from. If there was interest from the landowner in that, um, IDALS would more than likely be willing to pay for some additional storage to be excavated in, um, for that, if that was some interest to them.
And the bottom of the basin had to meet again this minimum wetland sizing, so the fifteen acres and the size of the, of the wetland all kind of gelled together there for this. Now, we've only had a preliminary discussion with the landowner and we are meeting with the landowners here after today at eleven o'clock. We don't know the interest. We are bringing this concept to your board in advance, but we also need to bring this whole concept to the joint board and tentatively we have March...
I, we've talked about potentially next week if possible, I don't know.
I think we'd like to do Zoom, but I didn't know if that would work or not.
Well...
Our board is meeting on the fourth next week. Um, I don't know, or is there someone that called another meeting? I'm assuming...
The fourth on Friday, the fourth, is that correct?
Lauren, I don't know if you went to call for some meeting on the first, I don't know.
I think we just...
Yeah, well, uh, how, it, a lot of this is gonna, today, when we meet the landowner, the landowner has to be buying into this, you know, to, for this to move forward. We're hopeful, you know, if they're losing over, the indication of the tenant is basically saying they're losing over a hundred acres typically a year.
Hundred plus acres of flood out, we have to plan on.
We've taken that down to where they're only occasionally with the tile improvement flooding out, you know, there's gonna still be large events, five-inch storm events that are going to still cause damage out there, but you're reducing that significantly by the tile improvement. And the detention basin is saving, that landowner has twenty-some percent of the cost acre-wise in the watershed. So, this basin concept, saving four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is looking to save them significant dollars, plus they are gaining back, uh, they're giving up ten acres to get a hundred-plus acres of ground on a regular basis that they're getting crop off of. So, financially, this thing for the landowner makes tremendous sense. For the overall district, it makes a lot of sense. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings would be huge. And so, we're hoping that the landowner is seeing this as a, a win-win for everybody involved here. But, we wanna get this concept out to you, you know, we've tried the five-twelve concept up here in forty-three, to build a wetland there, we're gonna get the landowners sign on it all. Um, you know, uh, this is really a additional, um, this is basically taking a concept being used in Minnesota to control sizing downstream, at the same time building a wetland into it and being able to get the water quality and getting the construction paid for of the basin.
You've probably told me before, what are the four layers of this?
Um, the, the entire watershed?
Yeah.
For branch, for everything, branch one two and one fifty-two, one seventy-eight is about forty-four hundred and sixty acres.
That is shown on your...
Yeah, I've done the first flat there, yep.
Your overall flat?
What is it? I'm just looking for...
Uh, right up here, there's a label for the branch one fifty-two tile.
Oh, okay, sorry. No, that's fine.
And, uh, and then one seventy-eight?
Yeah, thirteen hundred eighty-one.
Thirteen eighty-one.
What was that?
Thirteen eighty-one for one seventy-eight, which is that other branch tile.
Now, going back, I'll take you back, just in the informational meeting, we had a, uh, discussion about that we need for one seventy-eight, we need to have that improvement at this lower end, this stretch, a tile improvement on one fifty-two, 'cause that's where one seventy-eight comes in. One seventy-eight watershed-wise is almost thirty percent of the watershed. So, a remonstrance to prevent one fifty-two portion of tile being improved probably will never be met. And if, and the landowners there at that information meeting were interested in considering improvement on one fifty-two all the way. So, the worst-case scenario here is one fifty-two, the landowner doesn't buy in, other landlords, uh, basically are opposed to spending this kind of money, they back away, they don't do this, we would still be looking to do the improvement on that lower stretch of one fifty-two and improving all of one seventy-eight, you know, with one seventy-eight, seventy-eight. seventy-eight. So this work over here is going to most likely happen, because Sostagar owns a big enough chunk of ground out here to drive the one seventy-eight project, and those acres also have enough to prevent a remonstrance from doing the lower portion of improvement on one fifty-two. So, a lot of moving parts here, but in general, we, looking at this concept, will provide a major cost savings to landowners if they want to move forward with the one fifty-two project. If the given landowner is willing to go with the detention basin and wetland.
So this is three point six just for one fifty-two?
That's correct.
And then the back, if they did one fifty-two, seventy-eight, that would be the eight hundred eighty-five thousand?
Yep, those are the additional costs for the-
Now, I, I will bring forth, one fifty-two, after we start making a hard evaluation of one fifty-two, we, because of that large impment area and no free flow and outlet in that area, our sizing of the tile system for adequate drainage in this watershed went up from what we preliminary looked at, at the information meeting. The overall cost of this one fifty-two improvement would be right around a million dollars with the increased cost of materials and everything, would be about a million dollars more than what was presented as a ballpark preliminary at the information meeting, so we're talking big bucks.
And you don't, yeah, you don't think, uh, Sostagar owns enough that it would never be remonstrance of not doing it?
Uh, he, uh, we're assuming, yeah, generally, we don't think that, uh, remonstrance would happen, but if these landowners aren't supportive, we're not expecting that the board's going to support, if these guys aren't supporting. Sostagar wants to go after this over here.
What Ivan was talking about, just the very bottom end of one fifty-two, which is going to need to be improved as an outlet.
Is there going to, are, are the landowners going to have any kind of a figure? I mean, besides the total figure?
Right, so we did do, that's the other thing that was approved at the preliminary, um, meeting, was the pre-construction reclass, so we did do that, and that's done, so we will be able to provide them with preliminary, um-
Because summer could be very costly.
Oh, very, definitely, yes.
And the landowner of the basin is going to be in that area, I mean, he's got a massive low ground wet area out there, he's, he's two thirds of the sys- up the system, so, I mean, he's talking big dollars here, but, again, when you're recovering over a hundred acres of land on a reg- annual basis of, of the crop, that's huge. He's, he's, he's got to do that.
Well, I just want, I just want the guys to be able to know, but-
Yep.
What they, approximately what it's going to cost to be-
Right.
I think on forty-three and nine, some of those guys went, oh, son of God, that's way more than I thought it was going to be.
We, we have completed the, uh, pre-construction reclassification, that will be part of the engineer's report, and they'll be able to look in there, and we can help them if they have questions, show them what their portion of the cost would be.
So, today, they, uh, one of the next things was, we will be talking to the landowner, we would be following up with, uh, Rochelle and yourself on the regard to, but we do want to have a presentation to the joint board, showing you how this detention works, and we got modeling that we can show you up in Minnesota, uh, how that works, plus, we are looking to move down this road, if the landowner's on board, we need to do a full modeling of this watershed, and it's looking, we would be looking at around ten thousand dollars to set up the computer modeling to tighten up the design of the basin, the actual downsizing, everything that we've done is done through, uh, very simplistic, uh, 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 very simplistic routing, we haven't modeled this through computer to-
Can't keep it simple, is it? Can't keep it that way?
Uh, we would-
Why do we need to go to that?
Because we would-
Because that makes sense to me, just-
Well, it makes sense, but we don't know if this sizing is a hundred percent-
Rather, if it's big enough.
Big enough, are we going to be able to, with the basin in this location, do we have to be a little bigger, all those type of things to make sure we're getting the downsizing that we need here, uh, and make sure that our cost estimate, we are using the proper downsized, uh, uh, you know, and that could, we could easily possibly end up saving more than ten thousand dollars if we're oversizing things, if the detention basin was oversized.
That'd never happen, that'd never happen, so.
Well, again, we're using very, very simplistic modeling, uh, hand model, uh, estimates to put this together.
Does two or three end up in an open ditch that starts somewhere?
Yes, yes, uh, right down here at the bottom end of your overall flat, uh, open ditch starts from right down here on the-
That's the branch one fifty-two open ditch, that actually comes into the joint drain three main open ditch a couple miles further down.
True, that's correct.
Isn't that the one that Dick and Simeon, he wanted us to update for?
Didn't we just clean out the, the segment?
There was a segment, right, there was a segment of that that was cleaned up.
So will this reduce the siltine at all in that open ditch by having this ponding system and not causing the tile over now?
Not, not significantly, because, again, we're only trapping tile water with our, um, detention basin. We're not trapping surface water. No, we don't want to trap surface water, so, uh, tile water is going to have a lot less sediment movement in it than what the surface water does. And, open ditch cleanouts are always going to happen, I mean, you can't be working in agricultural ground and not have soil moving, some soil moving, you know, unless it's permanently suited down.
That's why I'm asking, it's probably what a fifteen, twenty year cleanup schedule on the pond, I would imagine.
On the pond with a for bay on there, your, uh, a for bay would probably be, uh, something that may, you might want to dip out on a every three year type cycle, because that's reachable, and it's right there, and you're keeping whatever sediment from going into the wetland itself.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I think we could size it for a lot more than three years, based on the sediment we have coming in, it'd be pretty minimal, so I don't, I'll say three years we're going to clean it out.
Yeah, it, it has to be small enough to be reachable at the same time-
Right, I know, if you're excavator. But would, would just only be in the tile water, and in, in the ponds we've done before, we've not seen significant sedimentation, we're going to need to go in and clean them up regularly?
So your one must have spent another ten thousand dollars on this, I would think?
Yes, but we're not asking for that approval here, we're looking to do that at the joint meeting, so that we can show you the demonstration of basically the modeling technique and how this works, um, and then, looking for the joint board approval, since it is a joint district.
Right.
And what we would like to do is try to get some dates that would potentially work for you, uh, on, uh, a joint meeting.
Well, is Zoom okay, or would we prefer that we're all in a, in a same study?
It would be better for the modeling presentation, most likely, to be-
As long, the only, yeah, I guess the only thing would be, if they have on Zoom, we could present a screen to them on Zoom, you know what I'm saying, I don't, I don't know what their capabilities are technology-wise on their end, in the courtroom.
You have a portable screen that you can bring in here? Okay.
If it works, you know.
Because that's, we want to show you how the model works and if it works.
Yeah.
Or we, we, could we do it in, the courtroom is where you do have a permanent hookup, right?
Yeah, but, um, we also have magistrates on Tuesday, I don't know what their schedule is.
We could potentially bring a screen, present it as well.
That's true. We could, uh, use projector here to-
If they were able to do a Zoom where we could present a screen, and then they could see our screen, I think, that, if they're not wanting to meet person, that would be-
We can make that work, yep. And the date that we had tentatively talked about, what-
Well, we had talked about potentially next Tuesday, but I mean, there's possibility there in November.
That might be better than the fourth.
So next Tuesday is the second.
And that's when their board meets, I think?
That's when their board meets.
Every Tuesday at the week.
And you, you're holding your regular meeting on the fourth?
No, no.
Oh.
No, here's the, yeah. The first time would be better than the fourth.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm thinking, you're very right about that, yeah. I can try to reach out to Gordon and see if he can get a kind of something on the first.
Okay.
Let, you know, the board know that position now, or?
And, and we'll contact, Rochelle, we'll contact you back right away after we meet with the landowner.
Okay, where do you need to go then?
Uh, their shop, they said they had, out of their farm.
Oh, okay.
So, that's all we need for today, and, uh, if the board is willing to do that on the first, we'll try to get that set up for the first.
Is the first looking in with you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to be here on the first. We're already, so I guess it will be.
Are you guys just going to tell me?
We can't really be here on the first.
What?
We aren't scheduled, we're not here, so.
So it would just be like a drink?
I circled the wrong day.
It would be just like a drink, so we have like a drink each meeting?
We're waiting to see what someone would use this today.
I think, I think they need every Tuesday.
I, I'm pretty sure we need every Tuesday.
I don't have to check with Gordon.
I would assume that it's going to probably be a later morning, they'd probably want to do it after their regular board.
I'll, I'll ask him.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And you don't worry about your-
Overall, do you guys think this makes a lot of sense, or?
I don't know about these guys, it does to me, but.
A bigger project than nine forty-three, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it is a two hour, it's at the point it's going to cost somebody a lot of money.
Yeah, this is serious.
Yeah.
And maybe you address it, but if you're doing berms around the entire proposed pond, how does that improve the ground around it, it's already retaining water, and then you're depending on natural waterways, it's still going to be low ground, how is it going to be that much more?
Because you're going to have the capacity for the water to get off.
Because you're not, you're not getting the other ones flooding in for longer, then we're still going to have surface issues.
You get surface water going there, but the tile, without putting the detention there, the tile is being sized, take that surface water off, you're trying to get it off normally in forty-eight hours, and you're letting the pond still function as, in a sense-
System and the design to handle that, whereas-
Right, that's correct.
Yep, and that's part of the model too, the model, and we'll, uh, when we need it, we'll kind of show a sample of what that model does, and shows, um, for, for the flooding and when the, the surface water is drawn down, that's what, what the purpose of the model is, is to show that, to make sure we're designing for, the, the, the big, the, the big slew out there, once you get above that again, then we start picking up quite a bit of elevation, that's where this is working out again, where we can outlet the tile into the detention basin, uh, and make this work because we got elevation available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
So are we meeting on the first? Are we meeting on the first?
Better than last. Can we have approval of the minutes, you're like the last, reference, uh, branch one fifty-eight, seventy-eight, so it's eighteen, I think that's seventy-eight. Eight, nine, seven. All the other ones, sorry, eight, that last one, so it's eighteen, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you guys. Do you have those interview dates?
The morning.
It doesn't work, um, yeah.
Can we talk to, uh, William, see if he can be here at those dates? It's kind of like his input, I don't know about you guys, but I will find him, his input into it.
Here it is.
Yep.
Usually in the afternoon, I'll hold up a check, you should be there.
Yeah.
What day is it, we doing anything?
The fourth and the morning. I'll send it, it'll be, we'll send an agenda out, probably more likely be closed session. One on one for sure, I don't-
Fourth and fifteenth, I think, we're in the news.
Yeah.
And the twenty ninth, I think it was January of this year.
I think it was, I think.
We did, did we?
Probably four, four.
All those may, uh, I, I hope so.